Looks like it's seven o'clock. Welcome everyone to the September sixth Planning Commission meeting. And we will call this meeting to order. Ms. Brooker, could you call rule please?
Mr. Cullen.
Yeah.
Miss By, here, Mr. Wadbro.
Yeah.
Mr. Ringwood.
Yeah.
Chairman Schröder.
Here. All right, um, next on the agenda is the review and adoption of the meeting agenda. Has everyone had a chance to take a look at tonight's meeting agenda? Take a motion to approve tonight's meeting agenda? All right, um, review and approval of the minutes from our August ninth meeting. Has everyone had a chance to review those? Any questions, changes? I'll take a motion to adopt the approval of minutes from August ninth.
I'll make the motion to adopt the approval.
All right, through a second. All right. Next is our public comment period. Speakers will have one opportunity of three minutes per individual or five minutes per group on non-public hearing matters. At this time, we will open up the public comment period. Is there anybody online that would like to speak? I will close the public comment period. We should go back. And as well, the meeting agenda. So circle back to all, everyone in favor of the meeting agenda for tonight? And it will also vote for the approval of the minutes. Everyone in favor, say aye.
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 All right, thank you. I thought it was. All right, old business. Ms. Graham, would you like to provide the review of the updates to the zoning subdivision ordinance?
On August twenty-second, the changes that y'all had recommended for approval went for the board of supervisors and they approved those. They were approved as they were submitted to them. The items that you wanted to table to review. Of course, we did table those and they are still upward discussion. So what changed was the definition of special event, private, public, and charity or religious. Definition to replace wayside stands for temporary sales. Temporary stands for sale, like for fireworks and temporary open air stands. Under the table for minimum site area and dimension regulations, the lot size area setbacks would not apply to public utility parcels under operated by the county. Under modifications to lot area regulations, accessory buildings and structures shall not be constructed. And a front yard on a lot that is less than five acres on accessory, one accessory building can be constructed out any front yard that is five acres or more, provided that the requirements for front yard setbacks and Article six are met in the size of the accessory structure doesn't exceed fifty percent of the first floor area of the main dwelling and it is not located directly in front of the primary dwelling. For any lots where the rear or side yards are located in the resources protection area, accessory building, the structures may be located in the front yard in order to be located outside of the RPA. Wording was changed to only allow one accessory building or structure in the front yard. Under the use matrix, we separated public water and public sewer. No changes were made to public sewer system and under the public water system to allow by rights in all districts. Under water tower include zoning districts AC and RR as permitted by rights. Under the matrix, also under heading civic all water towers by right. Like under eighty-six, one fifty-four accessory dwelling units. To read that an accessory dwelling structure that detached shall be no more than eight hundred square feet. And what was added was unless a conditional use permit has been approved. Under kennels, number four kennels to be located behind the primary residence or if located on a vacant parcel, the kennel must be meet the front yard setback requirements for the zoning district. This did not apply to parcels, ten acres or more in the AC district. And then under eighty-six, four thirty-eight exempt subdivisions. For further, any for this subdivision of a previously exempted lot pursuant to this exemption shall constitute a major subdivision. What was added was except for family divisions and on parcels of fifty acres or more. And then, and shall be subject to all applicable governing ordinances and requirements. Under the cluster division, what was changed was lots are by where lots serve by, or not serve by public water and sewer, it was thirty thousand and it went to forty thousand. Under major subdivisions, section eighty-six, four sixty. What was added was all driveways have a concrete apron that meets speed out standards. The remainder of the driveway must consist of concrete with a minimum thickness of four inches or asphalt with a minimum thickness of two inches and a granular base aggregate of six inches to eight inches in thickness. The driveway must be slipped toward the street when possible to eliminate standing water. So what was tabled that you had recommended to be tabled under the matrix of permitted uses for special events. Under eighty-six, one twelve modification to the lot area regulations setbacks for accessory buildings and structures to be located in the front yard and the resources protection area. Also under eighty-six, one thirty-six point two boundaries clarifying wording on measurements from the center line of US Highway three sixty and thirty. Section eighty-six, one thirty-six dash point five. Under the Transportation Corps or overlay district for changes to number six, the building exteriors. Review of proposed section eighty-six, one fifty-one point one agricultural private use. Section eighty-six, two ninety-four, the buffering. And review sections of the ordinance pertaining to landscaping. And review Article two definitions for industry, heavy, medium, and light and zoning districts to permit different industrial uses.
Thank you, Ms. Graham. Are we able to go through these items that were tabled? A little bit?
Mr. Chairman, before we go to items that were tabled, can we go back to the ones that moved forward for some points of clarification? Yeah, go ahead. I think that'd be two different discussions, so. One of the things I saw in here, item number eight about the kennels. In here you've got will be more than ten acres. I thought it was ten acres or more.
It, this does not apply to parcels, ten acres or more in the AC.
This is requirements on vacant parcels will be more than ten acres.
Are you looking at the memo?
I'm looking at item number eight on the memo.
I've got this does not apply to parcels, ten acres or more in the AC agricultural conservation zoning district.
That's what I'm not going to say. I'm, I'm reading off of this. This here, so maybe that was before we made the changes, but it's, that's what it says here. Okay, so ten, ten acres or more.
In the AC.
In the AC.
That is not applied for them.
But any lot in the AC, nine point nine or less or thereabouts has to need the hundred foot off the sides behind the house unless it's a vacant lot.
If it's a vacant, it just has, has to meet the front yard setback requirements for the zoning district.
If it's a vacant lot, but if it's a house on the property.
Behind the house. Behind the house.
The accessory dwellings. So that's eight hundred square foot by right in the AC.
AC.
That's half the square footage of the first floor. If it's attached.
No, this is the, the detached accessory structure, our accessory dwelling. We, during that time period, we had a lot of requests come in for accessory dwellings. And everybody, of course, had to file for a CUP. So one thing that they wanted to do was to help people from having to come in for a parent or grandparents that they were trying to take care of. But they capped it at eight hundred square feet. So if they were to do, or they wanted to do a larger, we do have children that come back with their children. And of course, eight hundred square feet is not going to be large enough for somebody like that. So if they're going to go over eight hundred square feet, they do have to go through the CUP process.
Wasn't it something in the ordinance if they wanted to, if they wanted to be attached to the existing dwelling?
If it's attached to, there's different.
What's the difference?
I don't remember.
I thought it was something along the lines, it could be half the square footage of the existing, no more than half the square footage of the existing.
But there was a cap on that too, wasn't there?
Not sure what it is. Cause I, I, I think you're gonna run into just as often people who want to attach as want to detach, so I think we need to to know exactly what that's going to say. I get the eight hundred square feet, if you want to do more than that, you can apply for conditional use permit. But there was language in there that said it was attached. It could be up to this half the square footage of the house. Is that the entire house or just the first floor?
I don't remember exactly how the wording was because that's fairly new as well. Of course, you know, we'll find that and we'll read it out.
I, I know that over the last I know over the last year or two, we, we had several applications of people who wanted to add in-law suites to their house and they had to go through the conditional use. Under the new ordinance, they would have been able to do it by right.
Yes.
But we need to know that the formula for figuring the square footage, minimal, maximal, or otherwise.
What, what this is accessory dwelling. An accessory dwelling unit that was contained within a single family dwelling may equal the existing finished square footage of the primary dwelling, such as a basement, attic, or additional level. One is attached to a single family dwelling or is a dwelling unit located above a detached accessory structure shall be no more than one half the size of the finished square footage of the primary dwelling unit located on the subject property.
So when you say one half, so did I hear you right? That's first floor, second floor, basement. If you take all of that square footage and it's five thousand square feet, you put a twenty-five hundred square foot.
It's reading no more than one half the size of the finished square footage of the primary dwelling unit. So it doesn't say first floor, second floor.
That seems very generous.
But you know, ma- many times when you have somebody that you're building that for, accessibility is a big issue, so they're going to, everyone that we've had has been a single story to begin with.
But the, the, the way it's written, and I just want to avoid in the future, I mean, you basically build a duplex on any property in the county. By right in the AC.
Is it something that y'all want to look at changing?
I'm just. Thoughts, thoughts in the commission?
I would, I would, before we get into discussion, I would argue that in determining the square footage of the existing dwelling, that certainly basement should not be included, that no other, no other in the appraisal business, the, the basement is never included in the above grade square footage, its value, but it's calculated at a different rate and it's not really included. And I know we get technical here, but again, I can, I can see some, someone coming in and basically saying, hey, I've got to build some duplexes here. And I don't really think that's what we're trying to achieve.
And we need to look at changing the voltage on that. That's what y'all want to do.
There, would you recommend having some, some similar languages to what we have for the, the detached?
That's the square footage. I just, I just, again, I, I think if you do not put something in there like that, it's just, you're opening Pandora's box. What are you doing?
So you could say something like limiting the square footage to the size of the main first floor.
That, or I would be happy again with, with above grade square footage or something like that. I just don't think we should.
I don't, I, I agree. I don't think basement, I had to answer you on too bad. The language here says accessory dwelling that is contained within a single family dwelling may equal the existing finished square footage of the primary dwelling. And then it says such as a basement added to additional level. I don't, I don't quite.
I guess if somebody had finished a basement off.
They could finish it off up to the square footage of when the first floor, well, that makes sense.
Or if they come.
That's, that's not an accessory. You already have a basement, you can finish your.
Yeah, but say you have, I'm just going to use it as an example. A basement with a thousand square foot, first floor with a thousand square foot and a second floor with a thousand square feet, you've got three thousand square feet. Yeah, if it's, if it's a finished attic, so that's, that's forty-five hundred square feet of finished area that could be used and calculated.
Square footage of first floor.
What about attached garages?
And, you know. They're not, they're not finished living area, so.
Unless they were converted.
Did it say attic and basement in what you just read? I thought it just said first two.
That says including the basement is what the current roomage is.
I thought it said up to the total square footage of the main house, so let's say there's five hundred on the first floor, five hundred on the second floor, that's a thousand square feet, so you can build an accessory dwelling for a thousand square feet or half of the first floor, which makes sense because half of the first floor.
Well, that would only be two fifty used in your form.
Well, that's probably too small.
I just think we've got to find a good number that we don't encourage people to build duplex properties. By like.
Homeowners to build a duplex, but this is for accessory dwelling, not for development.
It's really the same thing. If a homeowner in the AC, basically they can add a second home or capture their property with kitchens, bedrooms, bathrooms. And we have no way to regulate is that being rented out. You know, it's intended to be for, you know, family members, somebody like that, but the way it's written.
Well, yeah. A member stays there two years and plays with them.
It's not one of the tabled items, but it's certainly one we need to change. Let us change some wording, give y'all some wording options. If y'all have something in mind, if you can email it to us.
Well, I, I think we're being, I think we're addressing the concerns of people who legitimately want to build something in the backyard for an elderly parent or, or a handicapped family member, the eight hundred square feet detached allows them to do that. And I can see why they would want to attach it for accessibility. I can see that as well. I just think we need to have some parameters in there, so we just don't allow them to, to do whatever, whatever. I mean.
And there's some other things that we didn't table that we need to get into as well tonight, so. This is probably going to be an ongoing thing.
Yeah, absolutely. And I would say it seems like there's a consensus from what I feel maybe that, correct me if I'm wrong, that maybe we need to address something in here that to make sure that we we're not encouraging something, you know, a situation like what Mr. Cullen is, is pointed out. So if you come up with some wording that.
We'll come up with some wording forward if y'all have a time. And if y'all have something that you want to recommend, send it to us through email as well.
The next one I've got on here, number nine, under exempt subdivision, allow parcels to abut a primary highway as well as a secondary highway. So that's basically saying the twenty-five acre exempt lots can now abut primary and secondary roads where the Ford just said it had to abut a secondary.
Yeah, you know, it was like that in the old ordinance. But your, your single lot and your minors were not. Then when everything got changed, of course, the twenty-five acre exempt parcels got taken out and were not permitted. But your, your minors and your single lots could now have a roadway off of the primary roads.
Right.
So this just allows them to go back to the twenty-five acre exempt parcel.
And where the exempt parcels, basically anything twenty-five acres or greater can be an exempt lot as long as it meets the criteria in the county, so I understand that can be family divided and then you go on to say, and on parcels greater than fifty acres.
So once, the way it was reading is if you did an exempt parcel that was, and as an example, fifty-two acres. Oh, the way that it was reading, you could not come back in and re-divided again. So with this, you could do two exempt parcels if you wanted to.
Well, you could family divide.
Or you could family divide it.
Which technically you three acre lots, as many family members as you legitimately have.
They still have to, you know, meet the timeframe, the five years and the three years, but it does give them the option to do a family division later on if they want to.
All right, I'm going fast here, so I'm going to switch. One, one of the things that we addressed here and we, we talked about a little bit that you, in your opening remarks, TCO from the center line back, which I think is, is pretty standard. I had a couple of questions about the TCO. Is that state mandated? And is the distance, what's the, what's the minimum? Because I, I think someone brought attention to that idea. King and Queen is a thousand feet. We're seven fifty.
Seven fifty and five hundred, so it's seven fifty for three sixty and five hundred for thirty.
Where did those numbers come from? Are they the minimums?
When we first did the TCO in two thousand and five, two thousand and six, we set that distance on three sixty and a thousand feet from the center line. When we revised the TCO, it was cut back to seven fifty and it was still from the center line. Those were numbers that we've been discussing within the county.
But do we know if there is a minimum or is it, is it required that we have a TCO?
As far as I know, it's not required, as far as I.
It's not required, but you, you know, that's your, that is your core of the.
I just, I've had people ask me that question. I just wanted to be clarified. I don't have any problems with it. I just didn't know if it was state mandated. We don't know if that's, if it is or not, or if there was a minimum. And the second part of that question, two roads that come to mind, Mount Pleasant and Sharon. Those fall within the seven hundred and fifty feet off of three sixty. Do they still have to adhere to the TCO?
I would say no, because you don't have your frontage, you can't, they're not visible. I mean, their frontage is Sharon Road and, and Mount Pleasant. Any of it, I mean, I guess part of Sharon toward the end might be visible. But now, are, are you talking on that, like where the floors is?
Well, let's use the floor as an example.
So they do butt up, they have two frontages. So they would have to adhere to the requirement.
Because they front, but the parcels on the other side of Sharon Road would not.
They don't front the TC, the TCO, no. But on, on that one side with the floors, because they do front three sixty, then I would consider them to be, being in the TCO.
When we, when we, the reason we cut back from the thousand feet to seven or fifty feet was because of Sharon. Those are going back, well, those are sure.
So the three sixty side of Sharon, yes, the opposite side.
Yeah. Unfortunately, that side has frontage, two fronts. So it does front three sixty and then it fronts Sharon, so it is part of the TCO.
But visibility doesn't matter for the lots across Sharon Road.
No, that's not something that they're going to want to see.
So we might, we might want to pick a look at that and put language in there, clarify that a little bit better. Cause I don't think the language really clarifies that.
And that is something that we tabled that we need to go back to and, and make some changes on.
So we get real sticky here for a minute, but part, part of the discussion here we had was on the water and sewer facilities, stuff like that. I have run into it several times and this is probably going to be a Mr. Ashcraft question. Potential businesses looking to come to the county and are getting mixed signals about is water and sewer available? Some are being told yes, if it's already in the service area, some are being told no. Some don't know. My, my understanding, what I've been told, if, if it's in the service area, which means water and sewer is already run in front of that property, then yes, they can. But if it's not and you would have to extend it, then it's going to be estimated twenty twenty-five before that's available. Is, is that the correct answer?
That is my understanding.
Sherry, if we had, I'd like to maybe have, you know, include that under new business, if you do the HRSD update for us.
Okay.
I think that would be helpful to kind of know where we're at with, with that. I know we discussed trying to stay on top of them.
So that, that was from Mr. Ashcraft's blog a couple of weeks ago. So if, if someone were looking, Mr. Ashcraft, to come to King William County, i- is there something like other than the blog, is there something in writing that would say if that property is located within the current service area, then yes, we can connect to water and sewer?
We don't have an official statement from HRSD, as official as it can get, as their presentation here and to the board of supervisors and to the EDA. They have, they have said that they will not stand in the way of development. But they understand that they are limited. If it's outside the service area, then they're going to have to be careful in making commitments that they, that they can't on. But I understand a couple of years ago, there was a list of properties that, in projects that were submitted and those are being carried out one by one. And it's probably a juggling act for them. They still have about thirty percent capacity left that needs to carry them to twenty twenty-five. They feel like they could meet the majority of the, of the projects that are either being discussed, whether they've been submitted or not, or those that are already in the, in the state. There's just one major development that's outside of the service area at this time that they have, they have some pause with. Still doesn't mean they can't do it. It just means if everything fell into place, they would be outside of that. That's about as much of an update as I can give you internally.
So, so I, I think I think the Planning Commission probably, and I think we have a joint meeting, is trying to work closely with the EDA because those two really need to be on the same page. So with, when the EDA is out there trying to attract new businesses to the county, they're going to call down to the Planning and Zoning Office, is going to usually be their first phone call, not to the County Administrator's Office. So if they say, I'm looking at this piece of property and they ask the question, is water and sewer available? What answer will they give?
Of course, we will stand on top of the water and from all the sewers, if it runs through there, we will check through our availability. But we will also ask that they don't look back with this.
So it, it would be up to the potential client to call HRSD and say, we want to build a business in King William County. Will you allow us to hook to you, HRSD?
If it runs through there, they're not supposed to be acknowledging anybody at this time.
And I don't misunderstand. We're partners with, with this inquiry. But HRSD would have to be involved in the conversation. Whether they make the call themselves because they can better ask all the questions they need. Or whether it's an internal meeting where we bring people to the table. Uh, we just don't, we just don't let them go on their own. We're taking every inquiry very seriously.
I, I just wanna make sure when, when we do get somebody showing some interest in King William County. That they're not turned off by mixed signals. About is it, is it not? Call HRSD, we don't know, we can't tell you. Um, I, I think that makes it very hard for the EDA to go out and try to. Again, entice, attract new businesses to the county. If, if that's what we're trying to do, which is my understanding is what the EDA is trying to do. And then I imagine that it would depend. Somewhat on the project. If somebody's looking to add a restaurant, maybe different than somebody looking to add a hundred townhomes. As far as capacity and flow and so. I wanna feel, you know, through working with some of the EDA members that. When somebody makes that phone call, where, where does that phone call go to? It goes to the planning and zoning office with that. Is that Sherry? Is that Christina? Who's, who's fielding that call as it comes in? Cause that's their first line of defense to either make or break, get the deal or not get the deal.
Well, if you get it, uh, like I said, we know we're borderline, we're on a right now. Um, we haven't denied everybody, but I'm going through this. Uh, from what I'm standing from, she is not, uh, we would recommend to contact you, so she, but we could also. Um, you know, we will reach out for this as well. But this is what we're telling us, is.
I, I understand everything. I know your hands are tied because you're really not getting a direct answer. I just think it's hard trying to attract somebody here. And you know, just the, the answer I'm getting is not a real warm and positive answer, so imagine somebody calling in blindly.
They do still have availability, so.
We just don't want there to be. We don't wanna say King William River for business and then the actions of us as a county. Provide a question mark, a suited answer. Um, we want to make it look like we're prepared as much and I know that, you know, to a certain extent, there, it's not possible, but. The more we can do to help guide a developer through the process. You know, the, the better, the better we'll, as they'll put it, it might be the difference between a, you know, them saying, okay, well, we'll, we'll continue or. Now that looks like too much of a headache, we'll just.
I, I think as a county, I mean, and I know it's, it's, it's a hard question. I know you guys are diligently working on this, but. From a planning commission standpoint, when we're faced with a big developer who wants to come in and bring five hundred homes, we have to weigh. How strongly we support that, because that same capacity could be split between fifty new businesses. So would we rather have fifty new businesses or would we rather have five hundred new houses? We have to be educated enough to, to be able to make that a good decision.
I think we've got to be open with anybody that is planning on coming to the county and one most to develop in the county. If we've got capacity, then we wanna tell, be able to tell them we've got capacity. But if we don't have capacity until two thousand and twenty-five, then we need to be able to tell them that. In, in, in a large development. They're gonna do the planning between now and two thousand and twenty-five, and most cases they're not gonna be ready for it till two thousand and twenty-five. If we've got. Thirty percent capacity now, then um. That should be, we should be able to make a determination whether we can allow or not allow. Uh, the other thing is that I just wanna say. In the past, under the old utility plan. Um, that was based on the availability of the water from the wells we had. What the state water control board would allow us to use. Uh, a lot of developers were told that that capacity. Has already been granted to someone else. And there's no longer capacity for your two hundred fifty, five hundred home development or whatever. I don't know whether we've changed that or not with the new utility plan, but I think we need to be aware that that's an issue.
I agree. I'm not sure that it's, it's, it's that specific, but I think in, in our conversations, that's changed, especially with the. With the new water tower just right around. Corner uh for construction.
Well, that's gonna make a lot.
And that's, and that's another frustrating development for a developer. Is that we can give them confidence of an answer with water. Wastewater, we have to, we have to be careful. Uh, and sometimes they need them both uh at the same time and uh to proceed. Oh, oh, good question. I'm sorry.
That is one thing we want to do for a form of an area, we will check, we want to ensure that they have water availability and they have sewer availability. And then on a good note, by twenty twenty-five, we should have the water tower up and going and we should have a expansion of the sewer. So I know that's not helping now, but it is around the corner. And some of these developments coming in, it's gonna take them a year or so to get all the site work in. And some of the larger projects, they're telling us ten years out, now that we've been through it.
Well, I think this is another good topic that uh next month's joint meeting with the EDA. I think uh it should be brought up um as a discussion topic to make sure. Uh, our team and their team is on the same page. Um, we certainly wanna make sure that. What we're doing as a commission is not hindering what the EDA is out there trying to do. Uh, so. We, we have some congruency there, then I think that we'll, we'll see some, we'll see some, some positive.
I just have one more question for Mr. Ashcraft. In your, in your past experiences in other counties. Did the EDA. And the zoning offices play a little different roles in regards to new businesses and trying to attract new businesses to the county. An, an example I would give you, the King and Queen County actively. Tries to pull businesses out of King Way over to King and Queen. Their, their EDA is very active in calling. Hey, we'd like you to come to King and Queen. We have office space to rent. We can offer you this. We can offer you that. If a business calls. They afford it probably to the, I would say the chairman of the EDA, who can. Really educate them on what's available, what's out there. Have you seen in other counties where that was more of a function of the EDA versus the zoning office?
Depends on the size of your EDA and uh whether they, they have a funding stream. Uh, the best run EDA would have, would have staff. They would have an economic development person or person. Who uh who worked for, for them. And they, they were at it daily. Uh, they, you know, at, at the direction of the EDA. A smaller one doesn't have that luxury, so the members uh decide among themselves what their interests are. If some are interested in utilities, expansion, or others are interested in retail, or others are interested in agriculture. Then they all may go their own separate pursuits and then bring all that information back to the body for uh. For consideration. That's where I think our EDA is right now. Uh, it's, it's somewhat divided in the, in its priority, uh, with all of those things I just mentioned, uh, has been important. But this is an EDA. Many counties, especially as small as we are, are IDA. And an IDA is nothing more than a, than a financial uh arm for the county to be able to uh run projects through. Uh, because they can do and borrow money and sell uh land and buy land, uh, where county government can't do that, uh, by law. So uh our EDA can do both, uh, or an IDA has a specific purpose. So I think our EDA, uh, and Mr. Harrick is here, uh, I think we're fine in our way. But I like the discussion. I think people are excited about it. Uh, they just don't come to a meeting and not know what they're gonna be doing. I think. Now we're uh, we're talking about priorities and I think the meeting uh next week. Will further define what the members' wishes are uh from a priority perspective. And that sends uh all of us who have. Who have the ability to go out and, and reach uh uh reg- regional entities, state entities. Uh, in our recruitment, in our discussions, whether that has a uh, has a flavor in which I think that the EDA is looking. And of course, ultimately, uh, it comes to you guys and then to the board supervisors for the approval. Based on what you think is best for the county, uh, per the comp plan. Per uh the way our zoning is set up and uh it's. I like the moment. I know it seemed a little hodgepodge right now, but the fact that we're discussing these things and we're, we're discussing what's best for the county. Both, not just in uh, in projects, but in jobs. In uh, uh services, uh, in, in providing different opportunities. We're, we're discussing it all. I like.
Well, I, I would, I would concur with what you say. The momentum is great here and I, I know at, at any given time in the county. That, that Sherry and Christina are wearing fifteen different hats, not just attracting new businesses. They're doing, so I think they're doing. A, a lot of other stuff. I just wonder, based off other counties, if it would be beneficial when we have new businesses. Or where, where according to new businesses who potentially wanna come to the county. If, if they went to the EDA to try to get a lot of these questions answered.
Well, I think, and again, uh, everybody has different responsibilities. I, I think myself and Steve Hudson have been able to. To be the front people for uh, for any point of contact that's necessary at this point. And then uh we do, you know, we involve whoever needs to be involved. I think as we get bigger and get more, more contact. Uh, I think there needs to be a full-time economic development person. And uh whether that reports to the county administrator or reports to the EDA, it doesn't matter. It's still somebody that's working. Working, you know, now we have some, uh, at least one consultant who's out there helping us. And then of course you have the expertise of the members who. Is, is broad and I think that's, that's an advantage that we have here that maybe a lot of places don't. You have a cross-section of interest uh as when it relates to economic development. It's just good for, for our county represented by the EDA.
And, and I agree with one of the things you said. I, I think the EDA. If they had money to invest in somebody to actually be a whole, a paid person to do that, that would be money very well spent. Somebody who that was their job, to attract, facilitate, educate. Anybody who wanted to come to the county and if there was a water and sewer question. Be able to know to take them to Sherry or HRSD or you and just navigate through the red tape efficiently. I think would make us much more attractive to someone looking to come here.
That's a discussion that I think is, is very soon about how do we get the EDA a funding stream. Uh, and there's a number of options to do that, uh, none of. No less than one that the board supervisors would make an annual appropriate. So we'll, we'll see, we'll see where that is.
One point of clarification. They, the role of the planning commission, of the planning staff is not to solicit business. Our, our role is to develop the ordinances and the comp plan to make it as attractive as possible for them to come here. EDA would have the role of.
And I think that's, that's a very good point. I think in discussing what these ladies do. They have the knowledge of the ordinances, they have the knowledge of the zoning, uh, and it's easy for them to get bogged down. With, with that because. We don't have the, a, a broad staff that's going to, to do that, but as we grow. We all will be better and tenure and seniority will add to this too. You know, I hope I can be behalf of uh as intelligent as Sherry is when it comes to the cop lane. But I know enough now that I can, you know, I can bring them in and then we, we can finish it up, but uh. It, it's uh, again, I, I like where we are only because uh. We're talking and, and there's a, there's an energy uh that's even different from nine months uh to this day when I stood. Stood uh before you and uh and was my first day here. I think we certainly have uh. Uh, we've tried to put those pieces together and I, I like where we are.
Fully, thank you. Coming up and uh and, and staying up here on that kind of spur of the moment. But this is an important conversation to have, I think, and um, yeah, and, and thank you for that. Do y'all have questions or anything? Steve, okay?
Um, and this is a strange question, but I wanna get it out there because. We're, I thought we're all supposed to work together, but you know, I'm board supervisor, this is planning commission, I'm on both, but we've been told. And board supervisors some stuff that's not told in here and that's what I can't. Understand why we can't divulge some of that information to this group. Cause it pertains to this and I wanna ask you about it because that's why I don't think I can do it because it was a closed session, but I wanna ask you something. The problems are there. Businesses have been told that stuff's not here, so they leave. But we won't worry about who or why or when. Let's like to try to move forward, but one of the things that we were told in one of our meetings. And I can't say exactly what the issue was, but there's a lot of problems with HRSD and things have been happening, so. Can I say any of that or is that closed session stuff for board supervisors that's not even privy to planning commission?
That, that brings up a good question. Can we, can the planning commission have a closed session to discuss issues like that?
You can always have closed session and, and you know, remember closed session is defined by what the Freedom of Information Act allows you to go. And you know, you don't have employees, so you don't have to worry about that section. But when it comes to the announcement or the, or uh any project that has not been publicly announced, you can go in. Anything dealing with uh contractual agreements with people or, or businesses, you can go in. So yes, uh, you cer- you certainly can.
What I was doing with this was the issue about HRSD, what I said, you know about the water, we said we're not tapping out all the resources right now. But I've heard some of the things that, which I guess is not a privilege, this is general knowledge. There are ways contractors can put in a temporary system until the HRSD system comes on board, I've heard, so that. I didn't know if we can look into telling people that they could look into that to try and hold it over to get to the time.
But there are ways that they can, um, that we put in like a back brainwash, uh, with lift pumps. Depending on what's developed and is. Or they need to look at uh running easements to tie in to the lines that aren't there. And, and maybe just think about.
That's what I'm saying. That's, I didn't know what I can say and what I can't. I can't use names, but I'm just saying just in general. People that are coming.
Of course, no, that's also gonna require health department approval if he goes that route, but he has been looking. At both avenues to do that.
All this time and we could do that either.
We can uh, we, we can look to have closed sessions here if that, if that's uh. If that's the desire we do. Uh, we've tried to send out things to you uh as members, but. If you feel like as a group you need to uh hear things, we can, you know, uh.
I'd say if it's an important um item coming up. You know, on the table that. Is something in our. Is something we need to be paying attention to. Yeah, absolutely. The earlier that I think we know about something like that, uh, then the better.
We'll certainly give them more consideration in our future agenda plan.
Of course, it's not that we're being super creative, but. These developers come in, you know, they want everything on hush, hush, until they get further along. But um, I can, I'm gonna put that on our next agenda. Um, with the section that needs to be read out. So if you wanna go into closed session uh next month, we can. If you don't, you don't have to.
Would um, would it make sense to do a closed session at the joint EDA meeting?
I don't think you need to do it. That, that's a work session.
Mr. Campbell, just while, are we still on the same topic with a few more things that I had?
Yeah, yeah, they got drawn out a little bit, but I, like I said, I think it's a really important conversation to be had, um. Yeah, yeah, they got drawn out a little bit, but like I said, I think it's a really important conversation to be had. Um and it's.
Yeah, I have one thing that I would like to just finish. I noticed like you said, the same thing since I missed the last meeting. I thought before I left, we had talked about section. Uh the definitions, not definitions, but the number section eighty-six, one twelve, item four. On the second page, it said modifications to a lot area regulations. I thought we all had discussed, I mean, we talked about five acres, five acres, your last lesson, five acres, we caught up all the examples, examples, we had stuff on the screen. But uh it just seems to contradict and prohibit. The people that have already lived in here, the subdivisions, the smaller lots, which most of the county has is less than five acre. They only got passed recently. And now we have that five acre, but now we're sort of making everybody apply to these rules. So if you have one of these parcels or piece of property that's. Wherever front or a piece of property that's less than five acres, but fronts because they built the house too close to the front, not the back, they can't build a garage. I thought we were started talking about stuff that we weren't, we were going to allow that, but I don't know how we. If I decided that now what we passed was, I remember that afterwards at the board of supervisors, I didn't catch it till I went home. It's definitely states five acres or more. I'm like, but I don't remember saying that. I mean, is that what y'all did last week?
But under under number six.
Yeah.
We did put another section that says for lots where the rear and side yards are located in the resources. Protection area that accessory buildings and structures may be located in the front yard in order to be located outside of.
I saw that, but if you go in order with number four and then number five, I would think that you have to meet the qualifications of number five too before you go into number six. Maybe if we could just add a line there saying. You say any lot, but maybe put in an extra line there because I I still assume unfortunately that you still have to go by number five since it's before number six. It says anything. Has to be more than five acres. So can we, I know it says any lots, but can we say any lots of any size or can we say lots less than five acres or some kind of verbiage in there? That specifically states that in that or the section. Now, if you correct.
The other thing that I think is a slippery slope, when we say the R P A is in the front or and the sides. That's that's not a lot of lots. Most lots, the R P A's between the house and the wall.
Which is, we consider that the rear.
Right. But I think the way it reads, it says if the R P A is in the rear and the sides. So in most cases, it would not be on the sides.
So just rear or side.
That was one of the items we had tabled, correct?
Yeah, that's what I thought. And when I look back, that was one that actually passed because that's a vote line. I'm like, I should have taped it.
You did have an issue with the uh. Attached or is it accessory dwelling? Or you did have the R P A in the front and the side or in the rear and the side. I mean, it's it's possible, but I don't know. The language may need to be quite cleared up a little bit.
We'll we'll maybe take that back on to the board since we're changing what was approved, but.
Yeah, we're changing something.
We can certainly do that.
Right. It's just perfect. I guess. And that's what I thought we'd sort of say like that because it does say for any lot, but I'm thinking, well. Do you really mean for any lot of any size or any lot that's over five acres?
And and it was meant for any lot in the R P A.
I was hoping, but that's, you know, it'd be a yeah.
You've just got to be careful with that language about the R P A because most lots, the R P A. Is not on the sides of the house. It's just in the the rear.
But it can run up to the front, especially on some of these small lots.
But I don't want to see somebody who does not have it in the front, I mean, in the rear and the sides to be able to not.
So we can we can change it or um I wrote a note on that to to change it. So when we take this stuff back to the the board of supervisors, we'll just know that that was, you know. An amendment to what was approved.
That is section eighty-six, one twelve, eight hundred and twenty.
That's on the background. Only things that were tabled were the stuff after this, under number eleven. I thought it was table two, but no.
Yeah, that was supposed to be tabled.
Yeah. So maybe it says table at the bottom, but then it wasn't tabled. I don't understand, but I know we voted on it.
I see that. Yeah, I'm gonna start next to them. Yeah, I think that that warrants more discussion for uh. What else?
That's all.
Quick question about back to the um the temporary drain fields. They're going to be, I guess, if the intent is build it and tie into the county when it's available, to kind of get you through until twenty twenty-five.
Yeah, and.
Is the county going to own it?
No.
During that time?
Yeah, that is a private.
So it wouldn't be permitted by right?
They can do a mass drain field owned by the developer. And last that I talked with him, if he goes that route, he's only going to develop just a small section of the the development.
But that drain field, if it's owned personally, is not by right in the A C. Correct? Because we said it was going to by right in the R one and R R mass drain fields.
It would have to be um well, under the cluster, it does allow them probably to do that after to look up the exact wording. But it does allow for him to do a mass drain field, but it's not owned by the county. It would be owned by the developer. And it's something that he's going to do. He's going to have to put up probably bonding um in order of credit to. Ensure that that is being maintained until.
So a mass drain field wouldn't necessarily be considered like a public sewer system.
No, it's private.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
That's where we had separated out the water from the sewer and the use makers.
That and and because we have um one coming up that we we needed to do that. So.
What do you what do you envision? Somewhat loaded question, but. When that drain field was abandoned and they tied into public sewer, would it become a mass drain field? Would it then become developable area? Would it have to be reclaimed in some sort of way? Obviously, it's contaminated at that point.
It would be contaminated. I would probably have to reach out to the health department to see what could be done. I don't think it could be developed for some time. Um but I don't know what the timeframe would be.
I'm just trying to think of every possible question that's that you're going to be asked.
And that has come up. Um but he's he's looked at both avenues, so I'm not sure which way he's going to go.
A mass drain field for a couple hundred houses is going to be quite a few acres.
And I think he was looking at sixty homes, not a couple hundred. So it was only going to do a small portion until later on.
Did you want to run down the list of items that we did table?
So um what we were looking at is the matrix of permitted uses for the special event. So we approved. Special event private, special event public, and special event charity and religious. But we need to look at the matrix and see where each of these are going to be permitted, if it's going to be in the A C R R. R one, B one, B two, R I.
And I see that Christina gave us the example of the city of Suffolk with an application process rather than going with the. C U P for uh for an event.
You want to flesh all that with them a little bit? I do. So this was, and it's it's quite lengthy and it's fourteen pages. And fourteen pages is because it addresses every single component of what would compromise. Of special event. And these are normally large scale events, not something small. So um if you think about. Um West Point, which we kind of talked about, which would be like the crab carnival on the Chesney Polar ten K that would have done in the past. Um where you're pulling in hundreds of people and you're closing down State Street. Um where you'd have a four and B dot, but in case of City of Suffolk, we were pulling in. Um hundreds of thousands of people, because these are not small, necessarily small scale. On events where you're pulling in fifty or less people. Um but it does allow you to capture um if you need resources such as closing down streets. Um if we're going to need fire E M S, um if you're going to need building inspections for tents. If there's going to be bounce houses, where you're going to need permits and inspections. If you're going to need any outside resources from Parkland Recreation, and if they run out cables. If they run out any resources, it's going to capture all of that. So their application, which I actually was part of when we put it together, and because I'd inherited the process. And so it's fourteen pages long and it also captured whether or not applicants were asking the city for any resources for the city to absorb it. And so it's quite um inclusive of what a special event would um culminate. So this they changed it since I was there, but this is kind of where you can start looking at it and convince it down since we. Wouldn't get anything on this large of a scale. And so this, you can still capture all of the information in an application like this without applicant. Applicant having to go through a C U P process and pay that two thousand dollar fee and go through a public hearing process. So still same um information and same resources that the county would have to utilize. Within this um application. And it requires them to come in sixty days prior to the event. And I will tell you, you need every sixty days. Uh of that timeframe in order to make sure that you have everything together. Uh we tried, there were applicants that funded in less than sixty days. And we just, we were rushing around trying to make sure that um the event took place. And it's just very hard to do. And so that's what this application is. I will email it to all of you. I know that I only gave a couple of copies. It was big, it was a bunch of trees, I filled a bunch of trees today. So I didn't want to keep doing that. So this is just an alternative to having to go that route if we want to attract events. And I know um Mr. Ashcraft has been really good about trying to get farmers market in here. We want to try to get. Um other events coming into that county. So this is a really good way of doing it. Think about if you've ever heard of the peanut box in Suffolk. Um the city itself actually went through this same process for the fourteen page application. Yes, the city itself went through this process. I can tell you, every single event we had, we went through it ourselves. And it's. Actually a good tool for anybody that's never planned the event to know what resources they're going to need themselves.
So when when you just said that, but you emphasized the city themselves went through that process. Prior to that, you mentioned the farmer's market, but they had to go through that process under that.
Um so we had, well, the city of Suffolk had a farmer's market, so they had a bowling forest. So for the farmer's market. And they did not because they had a set of building and a um pavilion for it.
And oh, is there going to be, I know we touched on it, but we never defined it. What is a larger event? Is it five hundred people or a thousand people or more? Where's the dividing line?
That's what would be within your definition if we need to refine the definition of a special event, what's where you would do it.
And then the the last question that we've discussed it would, do we get a lot of requests for stuff like this?
We don't, no. Um but the hope is, I'm sure Mr. Ashcraft would like to say, um the hope is if you set something like this in place, that you can bring events into the county. But right now we have nothing in place for something like that.
So we basically need to decide, you know, the number of people before someone has to go through this process.
But the 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 impact on the community is what you would have to look at. And that the number of people could have that traffic, a lot of things that could cause that.
The traffic.
Yeah.
Um.
Why are we bringing this on to people? I think this is exactly the thing. I ran Spring Fest for three years. We didn't have to do all this stuff. But it's exactly the stuff that you said. We already knew how to do all this because that's what I had to do. I had Spring Fest, but then we just couldn't afford it anymore. I you weren't here then, but I ran Spring Fest. I was out here handling something in school. And one year we had it at the commerce park because we couldn't get the school. But we had to do all this, but we didn't have to do a permit.
So again, when you got traffic coming in, let's say it's an event that has a hundred people, a hundred fifty people.
Right, we did.
That's an impact onto the roads.
Yes, we had to get signs. I had to get B dot. I had to get the higher department. I had to get porta potties. I had to do all of that, but we didn't have to go through the county. Why are we making people go to the county?
Currently, the process is an organization would have to get A C U P, correct?
That's correct in the current ordinance.
And would have and would have to go through a public hearing.
Wow, that sort of shuts down all the volunteers that we used to have.
So the thought is, is that an application? I don't think um this is, we don't have to be as intensive as this is.
Well, we just you just you just hit that. I didn't know that. I mean, that just shut down everything. So if we ever wanted to do it again, we wouldn't be able to.
But an application process would would um.
Well, does it? So that means the county would have to do when they did the thing out here in the lawn down. I mean, if you're using that as a same example.
It depends on how you define how we look at the definition of special event. If we put a limitation on the number of people, it just it it's based on those parameters.
So I like what you said, and I think what Stephen was kind of part of his question. We would get away from someone having to go through the conditional use process. They would be able to fill out an application, meet the criteria of condensed persons, as Mr. Stewart alluded to. And move forward with with their, but actually simplifies things somewhat. If we can take what you've got here and and chop it down quite a bit.
Christine, I had one question. When you were with City of Suffolk, did you all ever, if you had a somewhat lesser event? Did you all ever go through that with the applicant and say, you won't have to develop this part of this part?
So when we went to this fourteen page application, I actually sat down with pretty much every single applicant and went through it with them. And so I actually had a special event um permit application. So for probably a good five months, I was sitting down with every applicant. Even to the point where if I had people that had been doing it for years and they were like, no, I'd rather not fill out this application, I was going onsite to the applicant. And sitting down with them and showing it out. And if it didn't apply, I was saying it didn't apply. So yes, there are portions that may not apply and you can check off that they don't apply.
Because I uh I think the application process is a good way for you all to get all of the information you need. And um. Well, there's something for later, but I just have. Had questions about some of the events that do go on in the county right now, how they're handled. And some some of those things we need to get into. The you've got a couple venues in the county that. Have events fairly often uh understood that they have weddings, looked up pretty much year round. Do we do we need to have something better for those? And and currently, are we capturing all of this?
I think it's kind of separates out the venue from people that just want to hold want to hear. Of some sort of special event like the Chesney Polar ten K that separates out those types of.
So right now we do not get a lot of interest in doing stuff like this. So if we condense this application and somebody did show some interest that then they could come into your office and we could help. Help them get through the process, which would be much easier than going through the conditional use program. Is that is that pretty good?
Yeah, and that's probably why you don't see any carnivals or things along those lines come through the county.
And I agree that this could happen and we need to be prepared for it, but uh in our last joint meeting with the board, Mr. Miskowski made a statement that I thought was pretty smart. It's like, don't make a problem where there's not a problem. So if we get a condensed one and somebody comes through, we can help them do it. If we started to get four or five a month, we might have to come back and revisit this stuff a little bit.
Yeah, I I agree with that. Don't make a problem. It did not, if there's not a problem there. Yeah, I, I, I agree with that. Don't make a problem. It did not, if there's not a problem there, but at the same time, we wanna be prepared for the problem.
Yeah, and I think a condensed version of this would, uh, would certainly. Do what we, you know, it would, would help both parties out. We don't wanna, we don't want your, your staff to have to be. Sitting down and going through a, you know.
That's all I'm saying. It seems like you're putting it all on her before we did it. Now she's having to do all this stuff, but we had to put all the, yeah, you wanna do it.
It's one of those issues where we need to look at how we can. Streamline this process and make it a good process so that. We're getting everything we need and so that we can protect the public. But at the same time, we're attracting these kinds of events to the county.
Which is what, I mean, we did have a lot of events, and this was streamlined the process, because they were going to many different offices. Um, at the time, where they would start at Parkton Bragg, and then they would come over to our office, which was the building permit office. And then they would have to go over to the police department, and then they have to go to another, so they were going between four and five offices. So this streamlined it all. They came into my office and sort of happened to go to several. But yet we captured all the information. And we had special event permits before the ordinance. Um, we did not issue many of them, but we had some, um. I'll just use it as an example, up at Presley Barn, they had a couple of events there. But when we get something like this, we always, you know, talk with the sheriff's office. They need to know because of traffic and safety issues, and we talked to the fire department. They need to know because, you know, it's a, a safety thing, and there could be some medical personnel that's needed up there as well. Um, you know, you, you have events that some of the churches have, and they'll have their little carnivals and craft fairs, and. Uh, sometimes they'll have outside music, um.
Fire departments have fundraisers, car shows.
Yeah, they have the car shows, or their barbecues, their fish fries, um. It's just a way to, you know. A- and there's not a problem with having that stuff, but it's a way to, to let, you know, the sheriff's office know, and other people know. Hey, we've got an event going on here. Of course, if it is a larger event, um, then, you know, it's gonna take a.
And that, and that's where the application needs to be something simple enough that. But, but in-depth enough that you can get the information you need, so if there's any red flags, you can.
Yeah, somebody's having a special event, and they want, they're gonna expect four, hundred people. That's gonna be a problem on a lot of roads. I'm just, the, the powwow that they have, uh, anybody that would have attended that, realize that. Just trying to get off of thirty and and out of there, but the traffic was ridiculous. I mean, it, it was just a lot of traffic, you know, it was, it was a weekend, but. At a good event, but it does hold a lot of traffic.
If we went to this condensed, um, version of an application, how would the use matrix, uh, what other verbiage would need to be changed in order? For that to happen?
Um, of course, the special event private, I think you should look at that in AC or R, or one. Um, special event public, that's gonna be up to y'all, whether you want it to go in AC, B one, B two. Um, and of course, special event charity or religious, we have churches in all the districts, so. Um, we're gonna look at that as well.
You have a discussion on that?
So, so just to clarify. Currently, the way the ordinance reads, it requires a conditional use permit. So what Christina has brought to us is a suggested application process that we could use. Modified to prevent them from having to go to a conditional use permit. But in doing so, we probably have to go back and revise some of the definitions. That we've just gotten approved from the board supervisors, and in doing so, we need to look at the use matrix. So, Mr. Chairman, what my suggestion would be is, as much as we need to get that updated in the use matrix. I think we need to make sure that we, uh, looked at this permitting process, uh, before we jump into. Um, defining it from a matrix perspective as well as updating the definitions. So my recommendation would ask staff to go back and try to put something together for us to put, to bring back to us. For us to address, whether it be the next meeting or however much time it takes them to do. Um, and I'm not sure, uh, what Sherry and staff had planned as far as, uh, the next revision that we would try to make. Um, to go to public hearing and to the board supervisors, um, but I do know that. It's important to get the matrix updated to match what the definitions that we've just had the board through, so we'll probably somehow something.
So we, you'd be in favor of making sure we had an acceptable application or file before we?
I think they need to come up with some, some type of, um. Application, whether it be similar to what Christina has, you know, used previously. Um, for modified version, that's not maybe fourteen pages, uh, that would be acceptable for our use. But again, we need to update the definitions to know whether, you know, this is a large-scale event and may. Need more in-depth review, uh, similar to that versus something smaller event that we're not putting them through. So much to have to address, however staff thinks that needs to be done. Um, but in, considering it's. Right now, until we approve that, it's still under conditional use permit that would have to come back to us, so. I just think we need to have staff work on that and come back to us with something that we update, that will. Um, clarify the definitions as well as the use matrix and the application process, if that makes sense.
I just have one question that somebody mentioned the wedding venues. Would the wedding venues be exempt from this?
Fair to find, don't require, or would not be under special event?
Certainly, the four or five wedding venues, we have in accounting that do seem to be booked up every weekend. They would not.
That would be under venues instead of events?
Okay, the, the, the Ruin Club. How would they fall in that? Because they have quite a few events as well.
But typically, they.
The fire departments with the car shows and the cooking and all, I mean, I just think we have to, and, and I go back to the, the number of people we've got to have. What is a large event? What is a small event? When, when do you have to fill out the application? If you're, if you're having a, a bake sale at the fire department, do you need to go through all this for fundraiser? Or is it just more, what you said, like the, the craft carnival, a really large-scale event?
So normally, you would do it, uh, so you can go define it between private and public. You can say that the public events are the ones that you need to go through that process for. Uh, because the private ones are the ones we define as, you know, birthday parties, family reunions, or by invitation only. You could say those are the ones that you don't need, um, to go through that process. You wouldn't need to change that definition. Um, the public, we said those are the ones, the circus fair, carnivals, festivals, which are advertised to the public. Um, which may affect the public safety, health, or welfare by its impact on surrounding property. Um, within defined number of people, you can leave it at that. And say that those are the ones that have to go through this process. And especially then charity or religious, we said those were events that. Uh, such as fundraisers, held by a nonprofit organization, or church affiliation. Again, you could choose to leave that there and say. Decide, are those the ones that you want to go through the application process or not? But you could say, leave the definitions intact, and the only ones that you're gonna make go through. The application process, or the ones that are public, or you could, um, make a determination on the number of people.
So the Ruin Club would be a public event?
Are they? They're a private organization, correct?
Either it's open to the public, I think.
And they, they advertise as well.
Just like the Farmers Club, would that be the same thing that you just said, the thing up at this point, the new shelter that we built?
I think that goes back to what Bonnie was saying. We're gonna have to make sure these definitions are what we're trying to do with the application.
So I think with the Ruin Club, what we could possibly do is, and it's something that we did with the Ruin Club. And again, this is at their leisure, and they had certain items that were committed by Rocky. And so with the Ruin Club, we said, we went in and we did inspections up down, and we said. And these are the items that are committed by rights to do, where they held. Certain things for their members, you know, if they decided to go have an event, um, a large-scale event. And then only in those cases were they required to do a special event. Um, application, where they might have had a seafood festival that was open to the entire public. And anything that they had, where they rented out, say, their, um, club. Privately, that wasn't advertised to everybody. They did not have to go through this process. But once they opened it up to everybody and they sold tickets, then they had to go through this process.
Fish bar.
Yeah.
Okay. So they've done that in the past. They've gotten a CUP for that.
They had to go through the special event process.
And again, that's what Ms. Height said. We, I just think we need to mail those definitions down, so there's no gray area. And that's, that's just, just disgusting. I think it brings about, about a lot of what ifs that we can get mailed down of the definitions. We certainly, we certainly don't want to hinder the Ruins. But then we also don't want to hinder another group who says, hey, we're Ruin Light. Another special interest group. We've got to be very careful with that, because we have. Not getting political with anybody, we have Democratic events, we have Republican events, we, we have a lot of different things here. That if you allow for one, they're gonna point at you and say, you allowed it for them. You gotta allow it for us.
I think that's kind of why we try to separate it out between public and private. Because of the opening up of public and it affects, you know, public safety, health, and welfare, that's when it becomes. An event that you need to be able to manage.
So, Mr. Chairman, if you're on, I guess that, I think that we need to. Just put it out there to that, to the planning commission, you know. Us even talking about this is to try to help the citizens from having to go through the processes of a conditional use permit. And the fees that are incurred with that, so. You know, I, I hear what's being said tonight, that, you know, we have to be very careful that, you know, how we set this up, so we're not, um. Discriminating in any form, um, that's, that, that gets into a lot of detail too, so. Is it worth asking the staff to go through this process, or do we wanna leave it as a conditional use permit? I think it's worthy to have the staff investigate it and bring something back to us, um, but I just wanted to put it out there, you know. In- instead of going through all this, we certainly can leave it as a conditional use.
Yeah, I, I personally would be more in favor of. Uh, moving to something that is less cumbersome and costly than what a conditional use permit would be. Um, and, uh, with that being said, I, I would like, and I feel like there's some consis- consensus, uh, on the. Commission of, you know, getting some kind of condensed version of this application and some revised definitions that. Are, um, maybe a little more specific, and if we have to adjust those and take that back to the board, then. So be it, um, but yeah, I agree, uh, with, with Mr. Kell, we definitely need to make sure we get this right, um.
And when it comes to the, uh, Ruin Club or events like that, fire department, some of those events. Um, just looking at that, at this application, very little of that would actually apply. And so for, for something like that, uh, but if we had anything up here in the county. That was similar to the crab carnival, then that's gonna take something like this pretty much completely. To fill that out, and we'd want that, we would want and need all that information. So it, it, you, you kind of got to find a mind to walk, to walk there, but.
Yeah, we need something that addresses the size of the event as well as the nature of the event.
I, I think the simplistic way to do it is the number of people. That, that's.
Between that, you can add a number of people and.
Across the board, fair to everyone, more, more than X, maybe you have to go through this process, and, you know, if you have an event of less than. Whatever, two hundred people, three hundred people, whatever, that was simplified, that would be equally applied across the board. So, yeah, staff would look at that and come up with some suggestions with that.
Just ask one more question. Uh, Christina, when I look through that, uh, suggested recommendation from, uh, Suffolk. Is it my understanding that it's the applicant's responsibility to go to all these different groups? That you need approval from, or is it going to be staff's responsibility to go to all those groups? That you may need approval from, uh, or notifications to?
It was. Our responsibility. So basically, once they submitted the application, we sent it out. To all the different, uh, agencies, whether it was within Suffolk or it was outside of Suffolk, we sent it out for review. And there were actually meetings every Friday. Um, that we had with, uh, with city manager, that big city manager, that we discussed some of these events. Um, so we met sometimes, uh, other times, it just went out. To the different agencies, and they reviewed them.
But again, the sixty day time frame was to allow y'all to have enough time to do that, because it is gonna still add some additional burden, burden to y'all. Um, to have to head up all of that process.
Right, and, and a lot of times, they had additional questions. Uh, when the application went out, well, what about this? Or what about that? Then we'll have to go back to the applicant and ask the question. Thank you.
All right, back to you, Sheriff.
Um, so the next one, I mean, we'll move right along here, because it's, I know we wanna, uh, touch on the PD, and. I wanna touch on the solar farm stuff as well. Um, so under eighty-six point twelve modifications of the lot area regulations. Setbacks for accessory buildings and structures to be located in the front yard and then the RPA. So, like accessory structures now, the side setback is fifteen, um. In the front, depending on if it's on the secondary, it would be fifty foot or seventy-five foot from the property line. So it's, and, and we discussed this on these smaller lots, it's the, what we want to do on these smaller ones. So that's why that was put back up and tabled.
I, I need to see what, what else.
I, I thought one of the things we had discussed was the smaller lots, as long as they would need the setbacks from the road. And the sides. That we were kind of going down that path. That's, that's where I remember us.
We have that, do we still have the, um, minimum five acres?
Not when it's in the RPA, we don't. But, uh, under that, that is, um, in the front yard and, and the RPA. So we're looking at the, the ones that are, um, five, five-plus acres. So with that, we can keep them at fifteen foot from the side, but then make the minimum frontage.
But it still has to be five acres, though?
Uh, not, not the RPA, but for the others, yeah, that's what was approved with the five-plus acres.
Mr. Chairman, I, I have a question. I'm sorry to derail what we're going through, but. I think there's a lot of things that we still need to talk about as far as items that were tabled, a lot more questions that we need to identify. Would it be better use of our time, um, to skip and pass this for tonight and bring it back at either a work session or our next meeting? or our next meeting, when we've all had more time to go back through some of these things? And get our thoughts together to ask staff about and allow Cherry to go through some of the other things that we really need to get through tonight. Uh, because I think this is gonna take us a long time to get through each one of the items.
I think you're correct, probably needs to be a work session, possibly at our next meeting. I was thinking along those lines, and it was, would everybody be in agreement on that? That, uh, we have another thing coming up.
I don't have any public hearings, as I say that.
Isn't the next meeting, joint meeting with the E D A, though?
Yeah, but that's not on our meeting day, so.
Um, because honestly, there's some other items on here, the transportation corridor overlay district. Our, as it pertains to the, the building exteriors, that is something I really would like to honestly get the E D As take on that, make sure that what we have, um, listed is, is what they are, uh, it's consistent with what they're seeing out there that, you know, to bring businesses in. Um, really anything in that transportation corridor, I think we can have a little discussion with the E D A, uh, with those things.
And I will check with, uh, Chris about something that we can slip in, um, for the agenda, for the work session. Just on that particular item, we can do it and then maybe do a work session afterwards, or do it at our November meeting.
For the rest of these items. Uh, real thoughts on that, does that push things back too far? It's, uh, we have a catch twenty-two, we have stuff that needs to be addressed in a timely fashion, but we also need to make sure that we get these things right. Um, so.
I, I will definitely say that the, the waterfront properties, less than five acres is something we really need to think backwards and forwards, but it impacts so many lots in the county. And there's so many strips of houses on these waterfront communities that already have things that we could permit or not permit. I, I think we need to look at it, because if, if somebody else has already got a garage in between their house and the road, and you tell the neighbor, you cannot, I, I just want to see how that's fair to the community.
Well, let us work on some things, not bring it at the next meeting, but make sure y'all have it, just to start reviewing and you wanna comment on it, that's fine, and then maybe have something a little more finalized for your November meeting. Will that work?
Okay, all right. All right, let's move on to the discussion of solar facilities.
So we have, uh, two additional things, uh, discussion of solar facilities. Um, some localities are, are capping, um, the amount of land um, and their locality that they can have, uh, utility sized solar farms on. Uh, some are just, uh, capping how much area of prime farm land can be used. Uh, I've, I've tried to, to look around a little bit to see what other people are doing. Um, we do have a conference coming up next week, and that's a good way to network and, and even get a little more information. So just doing a little bit of, uh, checking here with what we have. Um, so with the county having a hundred and eighty-three, um, thousand, uh, acres. Uh, the current ordinance, it allows for some utility sized solar farms in the A C district with approval of a C V P. They're not permitted elsewhere. Um, Sweet Sue Solar Project, the total land area is twelve hundred and sixty-two. Hollyfield One is two hundred nineteen point seven-nine, Hollyfield Two. Uh, the area that pertains to the panels, a hundred and twenty-one point three-seven. However, the total site area is one thousand, one hundred and fourteen. Um, with that totaling sixteen hundred and three, not the total site area. So that was another thing, if we use the total site area or we just use the panel area. So if King William were to cap the acreage to five percent, um, that would be nine thousand one hundred and fifty, leaving seven thousand five hundred and forty-seven acres available. We cap it, um, we can cap it more, uh. So it's, it's up to you, if we cap it at three, that's gonna be five, that'll be five thousand four hundred and ninety, leaving three thousand eight hundred and eighty-seven. So, uh, it, it's a fault there, if you want to cap, how much of an area that you want to.
When you're, what area are you talking about capping?
Um, for utility sized solar farms in the county. Maxing a percentage.
Are you capping the number of acres that are allowable to be used in the county?
Total.
Total, so you would be looking at, um, the total amount of basically A C. And if you kept hundred percent or whatever is that, then that would be what we, what would be allowed for. Uh, so, but the, the difficulty is in, is in determining what you would cap.
What we were gonna cap, so there's a couple of options, one, you can allow them to industrial. One, you can cap how much prime farmland, um, you can use, or you can cap the total acreage um, for the county that can, um, be used for utility scale solar farms. Uh, we know more are gonna be coming in, uh, so it's something we may wanna consider.
You said you're going on a conference pretty soon, with all the counties, you'll be able to maybe give us an idea with some other counties.
I wanna see what some other localities are doing, uh, there'll be everybody from all over the state there. Uh, so I'm hoping that I can get an idea of what some other localities are doing. I, I did a little bit of research and found that they cap ten percent of prime farmland. Um, some localities don't allow in their agricultural area, um, some are just capping land in general.
So one, one of the things you just said, that the prime farmland, so only people who own farmland would be able to participate.
Well, they, the cap on using prime farmland for solar farm is ten percent. So you would need to go with how much prime farmland the county has. And then only ten percent of that acreage total could be used for solar farms.
If someone had, uh, a thousand acres of wooded area and they wanted to cut the trees, clean it up, how would that work into that?
If it's not considered prime farmland, uh.
So one would have to own prime farmland under that scenario to be able to participate in the solar business.
So, I mean, there's, there's a couple scenarios to look at, uh. You, you could cap the total acreage allowed in the county for a solar farm.
What, what is the average lease for these, um, these facilities typically with the?
Probably about thirty years.
And then they are responsible for removing all the equipment?
They have decommissioning bonds, other credits that they have to keep in place.
So if, if they were to go under, there's money in place that the county or the, or the landowner would not have to.
And that has to be reviewed every five years and prob- probably increased uh, due to precaution reason and so forth.
Does the county set that limit, or is that a state?
They have to give us a blank down with everything, and we take that and we add ten percent to it.
And part of the bigger picture we have to look at when making these determinations, not all of the county is suitable for solar panels. They have certain grids, Rappahannock Electric, the, the western part of the county, has very little appetite for solar. Where Dominion has more of an appetite, but only in their gridded areas. So I mean, we just need to look at that. The areas where they, they're targeting, if we're gonna allow or not allow, or seven acres or whatever, we need to be aware. They're the two power companies we're dealing with, you know, what are your target areas? I think just a much more informed.
They can attach just anywhere, they, they have certain specifications of where they can attach.
Uh, another thing I was reading too, that, uh, they did not allow to utility scale uh, solar farms within five miles of each other.
There are already a lot of restrictions.
One, one thing that I would like to know, when you talk to these, these other folks, do they look at the site, um, from a, a, a visibility standpoint at all? Well, I, I can say for myself, if you did not know the Hollyfield solar panels were there, you, you'd never see them.
And we didn't get any opposition.
Mr. Hartman lives next door to us. I'm sorry about that, but.
And we really didn't get a lot of opposition from Hollyfield One or Hollyfield Two that I'm aware of.
Right.
Uh, but we did get a lot of opposition from Sweet Sue.
I, I just, for, for me, I, I, I'm not opposed to solar panels, but I, I think there is some places a lot better than others, I, I personally, uh, I'll get out of King Williams, I'm not picking on anybody, but Route seventeen over in Essex and Meadow Side, so I would back at the center cross area. When you ride down their main corridor, Route seventeen, I mean, they're right there in your face.
Well, and, Ross's class, with that excellent, uh, buffer that they've got right.
And their beautiful landscaping buffers that they've ruined it all dead, that they don't have to replenish.
So I, I think, me personally, and I mean, it, it may be too hard to achieve, but I could be much more excited about it if it was did not, if, if, if they came and, there's, we can hide this thing, we can leave wooden buffers. We can, we can shield it somewhat versus it just being broad as flats in your face.
And we do require buffers on these solar facilities, um, and it's a hundred foot setback from each property line. Uh, but it's, it's still a, a lot of land that you, when they go to put a facility in, so.
Yeah, I think, I, I think the ordinance is written, is, it's pretty good, it needs some, some work, but, uh, I think limits them where they can go and the total number of acres or whatever they can be used, looking at those, the things you're talking about, uh, I think will help, I don't I don't think we wanna see three sixty, ever with solar panels.
Yeah, or it's the R thirty, yeah.
And, and we would add still the, um, the use of the, the conditional use permit that we could, it, it just, it met certain parameters, but we felt was just not the right interest of the county, which we, we can recommend.
In a preferment denial.
Yeah, but, but when we, when we start limiting the areas that can be used, you're gonna get a lot of kickback, because some people are gonna say, well, you let, let them use, put in solar panels, but I can't, like.
And it comes first, call first, say it.
If you limit stuff.
Like, so some of them, because it's, because that's where the grid is, so it's not because, one neighbor may be not near the grid, and the other neighbor may be, so.
Yeah.
Could be totally just, that's only where it could be.
And, and I know very little about it, but what little bit, you know, the, this is how you seem, the substation, free phase power, and those are some really determinant factors of where they want to be. In some areas of the county, they, they just have no interest in, not to say that they want the future.
Yeah, but it's, it's future, I guess, but, uh, it's.
And we've got a plan.
It's what the county wants.
Would, would it be something? None of that is on the utility map, that, uh, I guess, I guess if there's certain areas that Dominion or Rappahannock Dean would be good, uh, candidates for one of these facilities. If they could identify them on that force, and would that be something that we want to include on the utility map as potential future solar development, that way? I, I don't know if that creates a problem.
I think yes, but what I have seen is, you know, a lot of times it's not Dominion coming in or Rappahannock coming in, it's a private developer coming in and then uh, like with Sweet Sue, you know, halfway through the process, they sold out the Dominion. Um.
And, and I've seen a lot of interests, and, and I guess we have to talk about small versus large, a lot of these middlemen come in ten acres, fifteen acres. So I mean, we could end up with them all over the place, yeah.
But didn't we have a megawatt, uh, specification with what we approved in right now?
Large scale is, uh, completely different, um, small and, um, medium, I think that's what, how they have it listed, they don't have to go through the process.
Right, so that's something else that we need to think about, and I think that may be why you are bringing it to our attention as far as a limitation is concerned. Because again, we have small and medium that do not have to come to the planning commissioner board where the large does, so. Uh, we wouldn't want to go across the county with small and medium, um, and then still, you know, have to go through the large without having some, potentially have some type of limits, as you said.
Is that an acreage thing or a megawatt thing?
It's a megawatt, uh, requirement, and the state does regulate some of your smaller and medium scales. Um, so I will check with our county attorney to make sure we're up to date on it. I know like the small square scale, it's like one megawatt or less, or two, um. Then it's permitted by right, and I think under, um, the state, we really can't deny it. I mean, we can, we can put requirements on it, but we can't deny it, can't make them go through the process. I'm not sure of the medium, but I'll, I'll watch out. But some of it is regulated by the state.
Yeah, I think it would be good for them, when you come, have a chance to get in a conference and can come bring back to us uh, some of the things that the other counties are doing, I know I've been watching some of the things with the camp, and they have, um, actually rejected a couple of the solar farms for, for Westford there, but yeah, I've heard other ones, so. I just think it's something that would be good for them, for you to, you know, bring back to us.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, uh, indulge you for just a moment, I came from a county that, uh, went through a lot of the, the growing pains that we're getting ready to go through. They actually cap their, uh, their square length, uh, three percent, three and a percent, I believe it was. Um, once you reach that level, they would not, they would automatically not be approved. The developers need not even to, uh, uh, to apply. Uh, what I would suggest is, uh, as staff is, uh, going to be doing more development on this. The, uh, P D C, in which we belong to, has a, uh, a lobbyist. It has been very instrumental in, uh, writing state policy and state law for solar vendors. Uh, I would ask that he, uh, be invited to come, the next time you have a very fruitful discussion on this matter. And you can ask him any, any question that you like, he'll be able to give you the parameters of, uh, of where you, of where you go. Uh, his name is Robert Crockett, and, uh, very, very, uh, knowledgeable on the, on this subject. So if we can send that along, I'd invite whenever, uh, whenever you guys are ready to, uh, to do that. But as far as the capping, very much allowed, if that's how you choose to do it. And, uh, you reach a point where that's what you have in, uh, in your county, you have so much development. I know there's been a kind of a slotty joke going with storage units the same way, but you can't, it's a little harder to cap those because they're all a profit business, but you can't, you can't cap this.
I, I would, I think that would be a great idea to have that jump, you know, because I know, I, I know very little about it, I have a lot of questions. This one would, would be, and I know you probably don't have to answer this, but if, if a project has a thirty year lifespan and it runs the course and they do not re-up it again, you know, would that acreage go back into the system at that point? Allowing somebody in the future, maybe to have a, a bite of the apple, so to speak.
That's possible.
Good question, yes.
The transfer of, of property. The transfer of uh, property could, could be allowed in that situation. But I believe it would have to go back and get re-approved by uh, probably both the planning commission and the force of the.
Because the rule is it goes back to, if it was farmland, it has to be put back to farmland.
Right.
Yeah.
Then they would have to go through the whole process again.
They would, they would, yeah, that's typical.
So those acreage, that acreage will become available again.
Yes, yeah, so anyway, well, thank you for allowing us.
Thank you, Professor.
Aren't you?
So the next thing is um, our PUD ordinance. Um, been looking into that, and uh, I saw Mr. Wagner brought something up, and under under page one fifty-four, on eighty-six, three forty-five, on number one, uh, fourth line, it references section eighty-six dash nineteen point three A three, uh, non-existent.
Did you find that?
Could not.
Okay.
I I looked everywhere and could not find it. Um, so I think we probably need to look at this and make sure that, you know, it's what we need, and and to make sure everything is up to date on it.
So to the extent that you can tell us, we have someone looking to do a large planned unit development here in the county.
We do.
So we need to really get this right.
And they've actually um, already started their first submitter process. We'll try, we'll get out to, you know, we've just, we've just received it.
Do you, do you know why they decided to go that route?
Um, it allowed them to do mixed use. Um, but uh, you know, with the proposing, it will be pedestrian friendly. Um, and it's of course, it gives you your commercial, it gives you your single family, and it would give your your townhomes, um, you know, access to your parks and and other things, so.
Sure, that um, section would be under the amendment procedure. What happened? They were looking at one of the drafts, they took that section out of the, one of the earlier drafts, and that actually applies to the uh, it would be page fifty-two, section, or section eighty-six dash thirty-five, three. Yeah, we have, it would be, as we know.
So we need to make change that section.
That's the. Basically, it's a schematic plan that has to be.
So if we want to go through it and familiarize um, ourselves with it, and make sure that's everything that is needed, we need to have it here. I don't know if that changed, so we did it all.
Would it be advisable to go ahead and plan for a closed session at that meeting, so we can go into some more discussion on exactly what's, not just the pro- process, but actually what, what we're looking at?
I'm gonna put it at our uh, October meeting. So at the end of our meeting, we'll go into closed session, and we'll come back out.
What other, what other posts do we already have in the field?
We don't have any, this is the first.
Cherry, if we're um, trying to review this to make some updates, because they've already come before us.
Yeah, they they've already started proceedings.
Um, so it would have to follow what we have.
Yeah, because, I mean, even if we were to make changes, they're not gonna be done in time for them to go out and submit, so their submitting has to be existing.
We need to look at it, but we don't hold up that processing.
Yeah, and um, we may have another one after this, who knows, but that is something we need to to look at, familiarize ourselves with.
Yeah, we do have two other process, two other parcels on the future land use map.
And and this is something that will be coming before you, um, for review and accommodation. So it'll go before you and then to the board.
So anything that you see with the current uh, uh, PUD that is problematic, that we need to address before any of the other ones come through, or do you see?
That was, that was my question, why the PUD. We have Kennington that has commercial, mixed use, attached, detached, single family, pretty much everything that this group is asking for. Is it advantageous in some way for the PUD? I'm just trying to figure out why they're going that route.
Well, Kennington has out parcels along three sixty that have to be zoned commercial. Um, and then everything behind it, then, you know, wasn't here when anything got started, but I'm sure with AC, it had to be zoned for R one. Um, under R one, they can do townhomes, or apartments, but each one requires CUV approval. Um, so they elected to do their uh, commercial out along three sixty and all of their housing and sections. Um, and they had to do CUV approvals to do that, rezoning and a CUV approval.
So the PUD zoning simplifies the process form, basically, they get it all.
But it's also, um, you know, it's on our future land use for for PUD, um, it's more pedestrian friendly, um, and it's a prettier development per se, with that being right in our main corridor. I mean, you know, you, we want it to be attractive, we want it to attract people there. So it's gonna bring not just uh, because fewer traffic, but it's gonna be where people can walk to it from these housing developments, that's a plus as well.
The the PUD does require a master plan, and using the master plan, it gives us a lot better management over the, over what's done, uh, not that we're gonna dictate to the developer, but it does help us to manage what the developer does. And in Kennington and in uh, the one on thirty, uh, they have commercials there, but uh, they built out houses before they thought about the commercial. So it puts us, really puts us behind the eight ball in tax revenue. Whereas this, we'll be able to manage that a whole lot better.
I I think they'll, you know, they'll be a good group to work with, uh, we're looking forward to working with them. They're, they're not at the master plan phase yet, uh, they've just submitted the concept plan. Um, we will be reviewing that, we'll send it to y'all for comments. Um, it's in the fire department, sheriff's office, our utilities manager. Um, everybody will take a review of it, uh, we'll meet with them in a couple of weeks, give them our early preliminary comments, um, and they will go from there. Then their next phase is to submit the studies, and submit their master plan. Uh, at that point, if it is complete, uh, then we'll work on doing a public hearing, we'll start the public hearing process. And then, of course, after the public hearing process, if um, it all goes well, um, and any, you know, conditions that need to be met, uh, they'll start the middle of their final site plans. And then once again, that goes through all the uh, review process, uh, just like the master VDOT, uh, HSD, uh, our utilities, fire, building, uh, everybody takes a look at it to just make sure there's not gonna be any issues.
So is your recommendation for us to look through um, what we already have in place from the ordinance perspective, and what updates need to be done in conjunction with people going through this process, uh, with the new applicant as well?
Um, the main thing is, I guess, to familiarize, um, this section, just be familiar with it, just uh, like Mr. Wagner, who found that one area that was not right, uh, so would you need to change that section, if it's not in existence anymore? Um, and if anybody sees anything like that, that I may have missed, uh, we need to address that.
So is this something that we'll bring up at our next meeting, is that what the plan is?
If that's what you all, we can do it at the next meeting, or we can do it at our.
I think the closed session would maybe be a good time for that. Um, since it segues right into the other items in that closed session.
So I guess my, my question was, would y'all have, would staff have time to review what we currently have in place as to whether there's any other changes that y'all see that need to be made in addition with us familiarizing ourselves with it?
I did not see any, um, like I said, with the exception of that one section that I couldn't find, Mr. Wagner couldn't find, um, I don't know, personally, I don't have tickles out of it. I didn't really see any major changes to it. Thank you.
Um, closed session can only be used for specific itemized items, but it's only for things that can't be left known to the public, but the actual plan has to be public. We have to talk with the client outside, talk about the specifics of the, the group, you know, closed session.
Okay.
Yeah, we can discuss the project.
Right. Cause that's nobody knows about.
With the PUD requirements.
So we can have a discussion about PUD as as an item, as an agenda item, and then we can discuss it further as it relates to.
To that specific.
But to go through it and make changes that need to be.
Here.
Yeah.
Okay. That works for me. All right, um, that's where I review, everything to report on.
Okay, and this is um, an item to take a look at for the next meeting. For the home occupation ordinance, and right now, it's something the definition, we actually have a separate handout, and it gives you a breakdown of King William's current ordinance for the definition, um, which is a little bit vague. We currently have home occupation type one, home occupation type two. And so I've broken it down to our current ordinance as compared to Hanover, and even, um, and again, I'm like on city topic, and so I've broken it down for comparison purposes, um, and the current conditions that we have in our ordinance, um, compared to Hanovers and the city of topic. And then finally, at the very end, I'm trying to broken it down into some recommendations based on, you know, what the other localities have to kind of amend the definitions, because with it so vague right now, it's very hard to take all of different kinds of things that people are asking to do with home occupations and put it into that very vague definition. Um, so we're just trying to clean it up a little bit. So that's what you have before you to take a look at and talk about into the next meeting. So thank, just thank you into you, I certainly don't expect um, uh, an answer this evening, it's to kind of take with you, and if you have any discussions tonight, we can talk about it. But again, you know, I've given you some examples of two other localities, one close to us being Hanover, and one um, from a little bit further away, so the conditions kind of was left what are in place, but added a couple um, in there to what we already have of the definition, I did take and modify, and pretty much completely to what we have now, um, because we have some businesses that really we need to define and to allow, um, that we have been allowing that don't really um, fall into the definition of what we have now. And then there are some that people are wanting to do that really shouldn't be home occupations, that fall more into the realm um, of what are commercial businesses, so we just wanna clean that up a little bit.
Anything else?
Not much more, so that's next one.
All right, let's wrap it up, Commissioner comments, um, this side please first.
I'm sorry, I do have to look for.
Oh, good. Violation laws, okay, go ahead.
And so you have before you all of the um, admin's reports for the zoning permits that were issued and in the different format, you actually have the new one before you this month that has all of the ENS inspections and the final zoning inspections. So that is at towards the end of your report. And it's several pages, the page starts at page nineteen. So you'll see, and this is, like I said, it's brand new, we talked about last month. And what I can't get into here from Edmonds is where you see whether it's passed or failed, and sharing, I talked about this. And if something failed for some reason, I'm not able to explain why it failed. Um, even through a custom report, that we're kind of at the limitations of our software, unfortunately. But you'll see that Andy's been quite busy out in the field, doing zoning and ENS inspections for some property maintenance inspections. So that's the new report that's in there, the building, and reported in there as well, that talks about their number of permits issued, the building inspections. And then we also have the property maintenance report, which we had changed and modified that last time to show what had been closed down and what was open. Like I said, unfortunately, I killed a lot of trees, and I apologize for the trees.
Thank you, Christine. Every report, every month has more and more detail on it, I feel like. So, good.
Okay, I have a question about that. Is it possible that those could be sent to us electronically versus sending them? I mean, running them for us, um, for the meetings, and and if so, would the planning commissioner be okay? They could be, yeah.
I'm okay with that, yeah.
I mean, if anybody would want to kind of.
Is anybody having issues against that, against having a hard copy?
I like my copy.
John prefers a hard copy, and Steven does as well. Um, in the absence of uh, the consensus, let's continue with what we have, but if you care to email it ahead of time, we can go ahead and review it, and if you have any questions, we can be prepared for it.
Or even if it's emailed the same day, or after the fact.
Yeah.
I know it takes a lot of.
There were a couple that were ahead of time, just because they started it on the thirty-first, and then there were a couple, because like the one with the ENS inspection, but that was a newer report, so we didn't get those until today, because on the the Halloween, you know, the first of March, so some of them you may get ahead of time.
Anything else? That's forever. All right, now, Commissioner comments, inside.
Thanks for those who all, who are in attendance tonight, always seem to come, really appreciate that, and for those who are online. Um, I think we've had a lot of good, open discussion tonight, so I think that's valuable. Gone over quite a lot, so we're looking forward to some additional conversations and company. Thank you.
Mr. Reilly?
Some things with this side, thanks everybody for coming, it wasn't quite as much as it was before, but we had a few people here, thanks for coming. Two people on one. And it was very important to get, I think we got a lot of stuff tonight. Stuff we got for the future of meetings too, again. Great things for staff support. Notice it's a lot of stuff, like I said, as we just mentioned earlier, y'all have a lot of hats to wear. I think you need more people, but that's a different matter.
Mr. Rider?
I agree with Bonnie. I think this has been a lot of good discussions tonight. I think Mr. Kellum brought up a lot of items, uh, it's good to have a new man on, on the commission sometimes. Because, uh, they think they come up with a lot of questions, so you think, you know, okay, so it's been very helpful. Um, but, uh, other than that, I just look forward to, uh, more discussion on the PUD development and, uh, getting on that, uh, I think that's, uh, an important development for this county. And as you were, as, uh, Sherry was pointing out, uh, what, what we would hope for was that would be a, a destination for this county. Which is something we saw the need. And if it's developed right, I think it can be a definition, uh, a really a destination for the county.
Uh, I think my number one point would be what Mr. Wagner just said is to try to figure out where we want to go and how we get there. I'm, I'm really excited personally about our joint meeting with the EDA because I think the two need to work hand in hand. It, it's our job, I believe, to, to try to figure out where we're going and ultimately get the board's approval. But then to give these guys on the EDA some clear direction so they can go out and attract the type of businesses that we would like to have in the county. Grow responsibly, grow in the way we want to see it grow with the, the look that we're looking for in the county. Keep it even uniform, be good businesses here, uh, and, and just become a destination. Uh, I do, being on the other side of the fence, there's a lot of work that needs to be done to make us a little more business friendly, if that's what we want. And I think working with the EDA, we can figure out some ways to help us get there.
Yeah, I, I agree with, with all these comments for sure. Um, you know, as we discuss and go through some of these things, we're, we're not going to agree on everything. And that's, that's perfectly fine. The discussion needs to be had because we're going to all come from different perspectives. And each perspective is gonna have, you know, a little bit of credibility behind it. And, and hopefully, um, we get really good verbiage on these ordinances that, um, that promote good quality businesses to come to the county. Diverse our county's tax base, um, give us growth, bring in tax dollars from outside the county. Um, all those things, it can't be had unless we work with the other departments and are on the same page. Um, I'm, like, like Mr. Kellum said, I, I'm very much looking forward to the meeting with the EDA. I think that their insight, um, and what their goals are, um, we need to discuss with them and, and they, and likewise, they need to know where we are at. And if the two aren't on the same page, and we need to get on the same page so we provide a unified front, uh, for the county. Um, I think that, uh, there's a lot of, uh, a lot of potential in the coming years. Get, get through some of these stumbling blocks like the, the HRSD. Uh, but once we, once we move through that, I think that, um, I think we've got a, a really bright future for the county. And, um, and if we spend a little bit more time on some of these items like we've done tonight and we make sure that we get the, uh, get these things right, um, then, uh, it will make it easier on everybody. And that's the whole, that's the, the whole goal of it is that we're not working against the EDA. EDA is not working against us. We, we provide recommendations to the board that they readily and willingly, you know, are, are looking to approve. And then we move quickly as a county to, um, to, to get those, uh, those developments on the books. Uh, that's all that I have. Anything else? Anybody? All right, well adjourned.